Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and non-mort化的 communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Thank you all. Uh, we're already, we're gonna hear the first application of Mary Ellen Holt, thirty of thirty-eight Hadley Road, Citriton, Mass. On the request of a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two A of the Citriton zoning bylaws and or any other relief, uh, to allow, uh, an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, dwelling of three Hadley Road, Citriton, Mass. Uh, decreasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent. Hello?
Hi there, good evening.
Uh, name?
My name is Ri- Richard Savat. Uh, presenting this for the Holt's.
Excellent.
As it stated, this is a thirty-eight Hadley Road. It's a on the corner of Hadley Road and Stewart Place. It's located in the R three zone. Uh, the house was built nineteen fifty-three. It does have a non-performing front gate setback to Stewart Place at thirteen point nine feet. The proposed addition, um, configured in a way that will not break the structure into further non-compliance. Um, will read all the requirements and on the existing non-conforming side, it's going to be about eight inches further off property line than the house currently is now. Uh, I've got the square footages that you read off, uh, the existing houses fifteen hundred and five, the housing garage is fifteen hundred and five square feet. Um, the house with the new addition will be thirty-two hundred and eighty-nine square feet, so seventeen hundred and eighty-four square feet increase. Um, the existing garage that is behind the house is going to be connected with this addition and it will be converted at some point in time to living space, but it will become part of the overall structure, so. Kind of have a, you know, existing garage is gonna be part of, part of the new setup and there'll be a new garage built adjacent to that, so.
Uh, separately or connected to the structure?
It's all be connected, okay?
All be connected. I just wanna make sure.
Yes.
Uh, and the thirty-two eighty-nine includes or does not include the garage?
Does include.
Does include?
Does include everything, we'll get that, okay?
Uh, alright, uh, I will turn it over to the board. Does anybody have any questions? Alright, I didn't either.
I had the garage question.
Okay, um, public comment? Anybody from the public have questions or comments on this? Okay? Nope? Okay, close the comments internally, no? Okay, uh, I think we're all set. Uh, do you have a question? Okay, um. Motion? You're not gonna try? Okay. Open, you gotta, sometimes you gotta bring a future. Um, alright, so.
I can make a motion to approve, um, the request by Mary Ellen Ellen Holt, thirty-eight Hadley Road, Citriton, um, requesting a special permit in accordance with MGL chapter forty A, section six, section eight, ten point two A of the Citriton zoning bylaw. Um, um, at with the, let's see, what's the?
One twenty-five twenty-two.
One twenty, with the, ma- the submission one twenty-five twenty-two, um.
On the plan, it's by Stein?
On the plan by Stein, Richard's servant, um, Lance Verrier. Um, that the, the doc not, doesn't meet the, the detriment, I don't know, I guess.
Alright, uh, so like, right, so we moved to, to approve, uh, to approve the, uh, the request as shown on the plan.
Yeah.
Dated one twenty-five twenty-two, uh, by Richard Servant, Stein, and Taylor. Um, and, and we, we find that, uh, the request does not create any new non-conformities. Uh, and to the extent that there are new non-conformities, it does, it does not intensify any, I'm sorry. It does not intensify any existing non-conformities. Um, and such intensification, if it does exist, will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. On favor?
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Aye, aye, uh.
Through, excellent, thank you very much.
Very nice.
Pretty easy order when you're building out the back.
Are you on number two? Elm Street?
No.
No, Tom seven, Cold Road, probably.
No, no, Elm Street, we're in double T, yeah.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, alright, so this is on the second application of Josephine Hughes and Samantha Zalmano, of forty-one Hatton Brook Trail, Old Saper, Connecticut, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty A, section six, and section eight, ten point two A of the zoning bylaw. Um, and then, you know, and or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the construction of an addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at twenty-seven Cliff Road, uh, South, Hummer Rock, uh, Hummer Rock, Mass. Um, increasing the gross, gross floor area by about ninety percent.
Hello, good evening.
Uh, good evening, name, uh, and why you're here on the?
Yeah, my name is Philip Baker from Lockup Design, uh, with the architects, who's working with, uh, Josephine Hughes and Samantha Zalmano. Uh, so essentially, as you put it, we're, uh, doing a second story addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Uh, it's conforming on the rear, uh, inside setback, it's not on the front, it's, uh, non-conforming on the front setback, it's only, uh, twenty-four feet instead of requiring thirty. Uh, it's in an X zone, um, there is an existing, uh, rear, uh, summing that we're gonna rebuild, uh, as a proposed crawl space. It's gonna build up and over the, uh, new dwelling, uh, to increase the square footage to, uh, twelve hundred and forty-eight on the second floor and then also have a walk-up half-story, uh, act. Um, so I was looking for the approval tonight on the board.
Right, so the footprint, just so the world clear, the footprint is not changing.
Nope.
The footprint, uh, is again within all the setup. Uh, the lot area, the lot is undersized for R three and the width and the frontage are not conforming for the R three zoning district. And the press is an increase of about a hundred and sixty, uh, percent. Uh, twelve hundred and forty-eight square feet to a little bit over two thousand square feet.
Yes, correct, yes. Um, we're also doing a proposed deck on the front of the house as well. Uh, it's voted out by, by, just a deck, no, no cover?
No cover.
No, the deck, yep.
Uh, any questions on this one?
No, like the last one, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that's what.
You're not increasing, uh, any non-conformity that exists, you're not creating any new non-conformity to improve.
Yeah, I didn't see anything either. Board? Anybody?
Just, you'll be tearing off that set of the back, doing a foundation.
Correct, yeah, just not adequate foundation, but same exact footprint, no change, uh, change actual size of the footprint. That's what I was saying, the proposed crawl space on that plan, it's about ten about twenty-four. Um, addition on the back, it's, it's on the same bounds of the existing.
Understood. Public comment? Okay. Alright, uh, in that case, uh, I will make a motion on the request of Josephine Hughes and Samantha, uh, Zalmano, uh, for the, uh, special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two A. Uh, that the board find, uh, that the proposed, uh, the proposed addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, uh, does not create any new non-conformities. Um, and to the extent it does, um, it does not intensify any existing non-conformities. Um, and such intensification, if it does exist, will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Aye, second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time is right.
No, we'll decide after.
Okay, I'm sorry, good evening.
Uh, Lockup Design?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, now, we have. The sort of, uh, ninety-three and one oh nine Elm Street. Greg, you wanna, I think, if they can turn, but sort of together, because they are somewhat related. Uh, and you can turn that, yeah, just a little bit surface as both cameras, um, and that was some of the folks over there, so. Thank you.
There was a late revision to the formatting of the, the lot remains the same, but it's an updated plan.
So this is one oh nine?
For solely one?
For solely one oh nine.
Greg?
So this is one oh nine. You got Greg? Name?
Director.
Director Gregory Morrison, a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. Representing the property owner of one oh nine Elm Street, Mark Richardson, who's in the audience right now. A special permit in accordance to be at the bylaw to allow fifty-foot frontage lot on Mr. Richardson's property. Mr. Richardson's property is located in the R two zoning district, typically requiring one hundred feet of frontage and twenty thousand square feet of land area. What's depicted on the plan is the subdivision of Mr. Richardson's property, what I've highlighted here, the gold and blue, is Lot Two, Lot Two is the subject of this hearing. Lot Two has the requirements to meet six-ten-to-be-at-the-bylaw. It has fifty point one zero feet of frontage on an improved road. It has forty thousand two hundred twenty-one square feet of upland, it has forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-one square feet total land area. Further, there's a note, note number eleven on the plan identifying that Lot Two is not to be further subdivided. Uh, it meets all the requirements of your bylaw.
Uh, so we know that this request, uh, was actually awarded, uh, to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling on the lot. Uh, and I think because we don't have the location for the house, the common dwelling, it's probably more pro- it's probably not properly characterized as a, respectively as a request for including the, if not subdivision, the, the common, the common driveway, right? Uh, it's, it's, it's in balance, the effect would be in balance with the lot. Uh, because we won't know if your house is approved because it tends to wait in queue.
Correct.
Right.
Looking, looking back historically, typically these went to the planning board first for endorsement.
Right.
And then we would be coming to you, and the way the bylaws worded it does, the special permit is to allow construction of a house.
Of a house, but not in sort of?
But the planning board will not sign an A and R standard of this until a special permit is issued. They can't cite the house and have two primary structures without the lot, I understood, I just.
Thank you.
I can clarify, clarify on that, um.
So, obviously, if we do approve it, this will be, uh, subject, um, to conditions, right? Uh, all necessary approvals, including A and R, common driveway approvals, um, as properly filed, you know, restrictions on the registry, of, with the registry of deeds, and, uh, the law would have to be more, the full, the full, the full, um, generally speaking. I'm not gonna restate that later if we do approve this. Um, okay, so, uh, common driveway on this, just walk us through where, so this is for Lot Two, because we also have another lot, and the common driveway here would be, so, and I'll see it.
As depicted on this plan, Lot One.
Yep.
Is the lot that's required to be serviced by a common driveway, because the lot width on Lot One, I believe, is around a hundred and seven feet versus a hundred and twenty-five is required in the district.
Yep.
Um, if we, if we do a common driveway, which that is our intent, and it's noted, um, on Lot Two, common driveway would serve both Lots One and Lot Two, you're allowed to measure your lot width parallel to the common driveway. Uh, that is a permit that is issued by the planning board. Uh, we've noted that, I believe, as general note number twelve on the plan. These are the same scenarios and conditions that we have funded on similar projects where the lot width is measured parallel to a common driveway that is yet to be approved.
Yep.
And.
And what is? We still have, okay, so we just, the, the, okay, so we have a hundred and, so Lot One is the one with a hundred, um, and seven, uh, feet of frontage and, uh, Lot Two would have the fifty feet of frontage, right? So that's why, just to be clear, um. This would be off Elm Street, so that, so Lot Two actually would need the common driveway, right, because it's otherwise, um. Yeah, okay.
Lot Two complies with the lot width where the building will be placed.
Right, it complies with the lot width, it does not comply with, uh. Lot. Frontage. Oh, no, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not.
It's Lot One that does.
It's actually Lot One that requires the common driveway.
Yes.
And that's because you need to measure the lot width through the house, parallel to the common driveway.
Right.
You can't do it parallel to the street, the way you normally do it.
I'm looking for the board to take any action in relation to Lot One, Lot One is a compliant, one and one, other than.
Well, what we're approving is the lot, basically.
A lot?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not approving?
No, no, it's, it's Lot Two.
Lot Two.
No, it's, it's Lot Two because it has to be a special permit fifty. That's what needs to happen. The reason you can do that is because it's a large enough lot, it has a lot width to cover up, but it will be serviced.
But the existing request, the question of course, is the construction.
Well. Yeah, I mean, we can, what we, what we would approve, if we approve it, is the lot and for construction could occur, assuming construction of a single-family dwelling meets all of the, all the requirements of the Zonex. Okay, so, additional questions internally for us?
Um, I just wanna make sure we're getting all the, um.
Right, so this is six-ten point two.
So it's six-ten.
B. So that's what you.
The common driveways.
Alright, and it's not two fifty-foot lots the other, so this lot does not require it either, right? The other one, the others, requires the common driveway. I think we're good, right? Right now, we're trying to, yeah, public. Bob, are we, are we understanding this correctly?
I think you are at this point, this is, uh, sort of the, uh, a piece of what we looked at previously.
Right.
But for this piece, I think, yes, you've done it, you've done it correct.
Okay. Um, so, we understand that, public comment?
I have some questions. Is it?
Okay, we have some people, that's fine, that's fine. No, go ahead, please.
So, are you talking about one oh nine, nine ninety-seven now, or you?
No. So we are only talking about what is Lot Two, which is one oh nine Elm Street.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah, so, I know it's all kind of interrelated, but not really. Um, so that's what we're trying to kind of piece them out, so this is on, on one oh nine.
I'm just wondering, is.
You're, I'm sorry.
Um, can you understand, I live at two thirty-eight Countryway.
Thank you.
Nine by, right there. What is this long skinned part of the, where the bottom, what is going to be that of that?
That's, that's land area that's part of Lot Two to make up the lot. Uh, we had looked at citing the septic system further back on the lot potentially.
Is that where the septic system might go?
For those of us who don't have, did he point out?
Sure.
Here.
Alright, can you just go, so I think she's talking, uh, she's talking about that sort of section back.
The rattle.
The rattle, yeah.
This piece here, we're considering putting the septic system in that portion of the lot, to keep it away from the house.
What's the width and length of the wall?
Correct, it, it goes all the way to the wall at the back, uh, runs along the wall here, at its minimum point, I believe it's twenty feet.
Yes, name and address of the right.
Tony Gentile, one twenty-seven Elm Street. Um, is, is this going to be subdivided into three, uh, two separate or three separate homes?
Alright, when you say this, you mean Lot Two?
That whole portion, you know, Lot Two, the, the plan is showing Lot One, Lot Two, and Lot Three.
Correct.
So are the, the future plans to put more homes on the, on that one?
Alright, the, the intent of this is to divide this property here, as it stands, into three lots. Lot One and Lot Two would be new homes, Lot Three is the existing home.
So that's. And Lot Three includes, just so that we're all clear, right, so Lot One, Lot Two, and Lot Three, that whole property goes out to. Right, Greg, can you go?
Goes all the way to. Lot, Lot Three is a rather large lot in here. Um, the next application, which is up with ninety-three, involves a portion of that. But the subject of this is just to the, you know, the, essentially the west side of the existing house, which are two new house locations. One of them requiring the approval of this board.
Lot One would be parallel to the immediate border, uh, back to the home, I would assume. And Lot Two would be.
So, so, yeah, if you, there's a lot of them going down there, if you wanna come around, you can.
Go with me.
Okay, so, we're, we're labeled as Lot One, Lot Two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, Greg?
Absolutely.
So, what's the process, Greg, for, for after, let's just say, the board approves Lot Two? Uh, this year now, what's the process of Lot One becoming a legally billable lot? Is there another submission, another public hearing? That's, that's.
There, there is, Lot One to become a billable lot will require to be serviced by a common driveway, so it would be in front of the planning board of the public hearing process for that. Um, it's likely gonna require a stormwater permit as well, construction on Lot One and Lot Two.
Okay, so until that happens, Lot One is not, not a billable lot?
Correct, as of right now.
Right.
Any more public comment on this? Yes, sir, name and F address for the right, please.
Yeah, Bruce Arbinis, twenty-three Gann, Faster Lane, also on the Water Resources Committee.
Hi Bruce.
Hi. Um, I have a question, there seems to be a tributary, um, that comes up to Elm Street across from, I can't tell from the map if this is applicable, but, uh, beach park in lane or something?
There, there is a tributary on the site, we have the wetlands at this property, uh, verified and certified by the Citriton Conservation Commission. There's a tributary in the middle of the wetlands, it's not mapped in the town of Citriton's maps, but we have identified it. We comply with all applicable setbacks to it.
So the setbacks, uh, nothing with a hundred and fifty feet from that area?
Correct, it's a hundred and fifty foot do not disturb setback, and there's a two hundred foot no septic system setback tributary.
And your plan's outside of that then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, please.
Um, Amber Vine, Amber's Grove. Uh, my question is simple. The, that hill is down to a ninety-three by whatever it is. Is that square, rectangle, part of, considered, part of the, um, um?
Yes, it is, that is upland area associated with Lot Two.
Okay.
Continuous upland.
Okay. I, I just find it somewhat disingenuous that planning board had come up with thirty foot in diameter width for, um, really to get rid of rattails. This is rattle, and this plan was filed the day of the public hearing, or the day after. So, I mean, it's legal, it's all rested, but still, I find it somewhat disingenuous. We're really trying very, very hard to do away with these rattails, but nobody knows who owns one and where. So that is just my twenty-five second. Thank you. And as far as the common driveway is concerned, there is one thing with the planning board right now for forty-six Elm Street that we have not come to terms with and will be, um, dealt with on the front page. And we had a lot of problems with it.
Fair enough, thank you.
Beautiful.
Other comments? Well, in that case, taking, to your point, but taking the bylaws as they currently exist.
That's right.
I will make a motion, um, that the third application, um, of Mark Richardson at one oh nine Elm Street, Citriton, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding, uh, in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and section six, point two of the zoning bylaws, to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling on a lot with twice the land area and fifty foot of frontage on one oh nine Elm Street, Citriton, is approved, uh, contingent, uh, that, uh, you know, we're on any conditions that affect the lot, uh, uh, that, that the affected lots, uh, we see lot, we see all necessary approvals, including A and R and common driveway approvals, um, that these are filed by the registry, uh, with the registry of deeds. Uh, as a proposed, uh, dwelling meet all of the full provisions of the Citriton zoning bylaws, uh, wetlands bylaws, and water health regulations. Right, a second?
That can.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Thank you on that one.
Thank you.
If I may, yeah, Mr. Richardson's attorney, Steve Gard, has offered to draft a decision and sent it to you. You will love that, on that one.
Thank you. Um, you're gonna now flip that, and then I'll call it.
Please advise for this one.
Or, I'll call that one, just to be clear, the latest plan we have is February seventh of this month. Correct. Second, a second. So, now, on the fourth application of Robert and Christina Coonahan, fifty-five Collins Street, Citriton, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and section six, ten point two B of the Citriton zoning bylaw and or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant, will allow construction of a single-family dwelling on a lot with twice the land area and fifty foot of frontage at ninety-three Elm Street, Citriton, Mass. Um, name, name for the record, please.
Thank you, Gregory Morse, registered engineer with Morse Engineering, representing the property owners on this. Uh, Mark Richardson at that one oh nine Elm Street, and Bob and Christina Coonahan at ninety three Elm Street. Bob is with us in the audience here this evening. This is on the eastern side of the residence that we looked at with the last application. The proposal here is to divide, uh, the remainder of the one oh nine Elm Street land and combine it with the ninety three Elm Street land as depicted on this plan, specifically creating lot six. Lot six is the highlighted plan that you see up there. It is proposed as a fifty foot frontage lot in accordance with six ten two B of the bylaw. It meets all the requirements of the bylaw, notably having forty thousand three hundred seventy seven square feet of area, forty thousand seventy one square feet of upland, and fifty one point seven seven feet of frontage. I turn it over to you.
Uh, do we have any common driveway requirements on this lot?
Lot five on this plan would be serviced by a common driveway, which is currently, much like the other situation, not currently a buildable lot.
Correct. Seems like a very similar situation. Uh, any sort of different, yeah, any, anything different that we're, we should be looking at?
Well, it's, it's very much like, um, a situation the board approved last fall on Holland Street, you may recall that, and I believe it's the one Ms. Irvine was referring to when she said there's a common driveway being discussed by the planning board right now. Um, yes, that was approved, the issue there, and, uh, and the board saw their, saw their way through it. Uh, but it's the same issue here, by making the subdivision that's shown here, you're actually creating a non-conforming, quote, illegal lot for an existing dwelling, which is number ninety three, lot five.
Right.
That lot, that lot remains illegal, again, quotes, uh, until and unless the common driveway is constructed. So, this is all on paper, admittedly, uh, but there's a question, I guess, whether or not the subdivision that's shown can actually happen uh, until the common driveway is approved, or maybe even until the common driveway is constructed. That's a question in my mind, it may not be answered. That, that's the difference.
Um, Greg, what is the current plan regarding the dwelling? Now, which would be on lot five, assuming all these subdivisions occur?
Yeah, if I, if I may kind of respond to that, and.
Yeah.
Mr. Vogel. Um, lot five, we have a general note that the dwelling on lot five, as it sits today, is to be raised. It's in horrible condition, needs to come down, and will do so as soon as the approvals are replaced. The lot itself that we're creating with this A and R, um, complies with land area requirements, complies with the frontage. The only requirement for lot width is when there is a structure built or to be built on a lot. Lot five will be a vacant lot when that structure comes down. Uh, we certainly would maintain that as a condition of approval that is noted on the plan that that house is to be raised. It is also noted that lot five is not a buildable lot until such a time that the planning board issues a common driveway serving lot five and lot six.
Well, thank you. That is, that to me would be satisfactory. Question. If, how much more frontage? How much more frontage do we need to be buildable lots without a common driveway?
Build up. The issue is with respect to the tributary, the tributary, you'll see that there's a drain pipe on lot three.
Yes.
Uh, it pushes us closer to that drain pipe than that tributary. If you were, if you were drain lot two, up another twenty five feet, you'd be working twenty five feet closer to tributary than four. Common driveway is not a special permit by the planning board, it is an administrative.
Lot four is completely buildable as designed right now.
Correct.
And lot five.
Second, um, as of right now, any questions by the board? Additional? Okay, we will turn this over to the public, so this is on ninety, uh, lot five, which is ninety three Elm Street. Um, questions in public on this one? Now?
I'm over here at ninety one Elm Street, um, so we get a letter saying there's going to be, this is for a single family home, and now I'm hearing there's going to be, this is for two homes to be built on this lot?
No, that, that is not.
Are to be approved for it to be subdivided into.
No, so this lot, the, the application for this lot, that's outlined there.
Yeah.
Is for a, a lot that will have a single family home on it that will be, that will have to meet all the zoning board criteria.
So what was the second lot that was being spoken, I can't.
Well, there, there's a previous lot, it was on the other side.
Okay.
And there are other lots around this, but the lot we're talking about is, uh, forty thousand square feet, which is um, that is shaped that way, and is on that side of Elm Street.
So that would be for one.
One house on that, yes, single family, it's being approved for a single family law.
Okay.
So between, between you and the existing house that's there.
Yeah.
There's one lot.
Oh, there's another, this is not where the existing house is?
No.
No.
Between. Or behind, or.
Wherever, I don't remember.
If, if there are ninety, is there right there?
You may, absolutely.
Okay, so this is where the hot, the house is.
Currently.
So this is.
That whole, that thing in blue.
That, that's like.
Yeah, that's an acre.
Apparently, I mean, I don't mean.
Fifty feet.
That's fifty one point seven.
Fifty one point seven feet in the front.
With. Have they, have they looked at where the existing house here is, as close to like?
I answered your question.
Because that's there, and it's pretty close to that property line, so.
Right, but the, the house isn't, so it's, good point, um, but the house isn't set on this, we're, we're just approving the.
So this would be where the access would be to this lot?
Uh, it might be.
Okay.
Um, it depends if that common driveway is created, and arguably the common driveway would be on the other side.
Got you.
And Greg, please, if I say something that I'm misspeaking, correct me, I'm, it's how I'm reading it, right?
The, the common driveway would likely come along with a fifty foot access portion.
Okay.
Yeah, to the house in the back, right where it says lot six, that's where the new house would be sited, right there.
So this was told to us when we bought this property, that this was protected, that this was.
There is adjacent land to this that is protected, that's owned by the town of Situate, and was part of open space associated with the Van Gendy Drive, but this land here is not protected in any way.
Oh, I mean, other than there are some wetlands.
The wet one, right?
Wet, right, so that, that's not there, that's, for the doubt. Right, yeah, exactly, yeah. You guys good? We gotta go with what the bylaws say, right?
Gotta go with what's in there.
Currently in the bylaws.
Yeah, currently, hopefully that will be changed.
We'll, 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 we'll see, no, uh, all right, on the app, fourth application, uh, of Robert and Christina Coonahan, for fifty five Collins Street, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section six. Section six ten point two B of the Situate zoning bylaw, uh, and, or any other relief that the board of appeals may grant to allow the construction of a single family dwelling on a lot with twice the land area and fifty feet of frontage at ninety three Elm Street. The line that is, I, yes, um, that we approve that, uh, with the conditions, uh, and pursuant to the plan, pursuant to the plan dated February seventh, twenty twenty two, um, regarding, uh, this Elm Street parcel by Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering, uh, with the conditions on that plan, as well as, uh, any necessary approvals, including A and R, common driveway approvals, um, as, and that these are probably for registry of deeds, and it can gross loans, and meet all applicable provisions of the Situate, uh, Situate zoning bylaws, wetlands bylaws, and water health regulations, with the additional, uh, condition, uh, that the dwelling on lot five of the plan be raised. Um, and that, that lot go through any other necessary approvals to be commonly buildable lot. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved.
Thank you very much, Eric, have a good night.
We are, our fifth application this evening of, uh, Kenton Elm, or Burgess Elm. Longer, sorry, longer zone. Of seventy eight Circle Situate, requesting a variance in accordance with ninety fifty point two C of the town of Situate zoning bylaw, um, for, uh, construction of a single family dwelling in five buildings, third lane. Uh, we have, we have received a request for continuance, uh, so we will be granting that, uh, to the next.
April twenty first.
April twenty first. April twenty first meeting. On favor, so we vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
I didn't need a second to that. Um, okay, so we are now on our final application. Uh, is anyone here on the sixth application of Centill Kumar, on the trustee of three twenty two CJC Realty Trust for three twenty two Chief Justice Kushner, highways, Situate Mass, on the request for a special permit finding?
Tony Walter Sullivan.
I think he's in the hall.
I'm sorry?
I think he's in the hall.
Oh, okay. I didn't see him, so.
Thank you, I apologize, thanks. That's all right, Walter. Paul was going to be here with the plan, so I apologize, but I think you have it in front of you. Uh, by way of background, the record, I'm Walter Sullivan, the attorney for Kumar, still a property owner. Uh, we were in here several months ago looking for a E one L to subdivide existing structures on this property, put them all on their own lot, and we were looking for a finding by the CBA that that was not made the E one L performing, and the observation by this board, um, we're not favorable, um, to that type of a finding, so we continue the hearing.
Right.
What you now have in front of you, um, is we are seeking to put the house on lot two, the existing structures. And then on lot one is a fifty foot lot under six ten of the, section six, six ten of the bylaw. And we are going to kind of minimize the two existing residential structures that are there, and then use the garage to service them, so we aren't changing the footprint of any of the existing structures. It would just be a building permit to do renovations inside, and instead of three lots, we're now looking to just do two.
Right.
One being the fifty foot, uh, lot under the bylaw. Uh, and so there's the, uh, you know, there, there should be virtually no disturbance, obviously the, in approving the fifty foot lot, which, right, I think we, we need the dimensional requirements, that the board could put conditions on it, which we would expect, there could be no further division of the lots. And so that's our current plan, and I think, um, we have got over with the building inspector, we submitted it to the deputy fire chief Donovan, and we met with the neighbors earlier this week on Monday night at the library to sort of explain what's going on, because I think it was confusing when we were last here.
Well, we have, there was another lot.
Yeah.
Right, so it's fair that it was different, it's, it's now different than what. Um, is, is the proposal to use the existing common driveway?
It is, so it's not really a common driveway, because it's only two lots, not three. Um, so that's, that'll be our next step, and we also have to go to the planning board to actually get the division approved. Uh, we came here first so that, um, we wouldn't have to, uh, well, in the first instance, it was to see if the board was inclined to give us the finding of the E and not being more not performing. Now it's for the approval of a fifty foot lot.
Right. Which is in this lot two.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Uh, we have all upland in both cases. And two acre lot and a one acre lot, one acre lot being the so-called fifty foot lot. I'm sorry, lot one being the so-called, the two acre lot being the so-called fifty foot lot. Um, because, uh, again, at the, you know, the width gets a little tight, uh, down by, see, the Chief Justice Kushner. Um, it's better than fifty feet, uh, is all I'm saying. Okay. Uh, uh, thoughts on this?
Uh, not really, uh, but I'm liking it a little bit better than last night. Yeah, so.
I'm channeling Tony on this one.
I mean, the hybridization, if that's the right word, uh, is a legal, you know, situation. It doesn't really fall to the zoning board.
Right.
Especially with that.
Right.
The common driveway, I believe, is going to have to be approved by the planning board, right, right about there, Walter?
Well, um, I guess what we're going to do is, uh, we, we have to go to the planning board to add one, but we're going to argue that we don't really need a common driveway to service the existing lot, which is sort of, you know, it's, it's there. Um, and so we're going to propose that it's really not a special permit, but, you know, that would be a determination.
Okay, there'll be discussions, I'm sure, about drainage and allowed access for emergency vehicles and things like that.
And, and I did speak to Deputy Chief Donovan, um, and he indicated that as long as it's sixteen feet wide, that he would be okay with it. It, it has an existing turnaround, so the, the emergency vehicles can get in and out.
Um, do we have a new, this is sort of procedural, just paperwork wise. Um, the only application that I have in front of me is the forty eight, section six, application.
I, I feel like I did the belts and suspenders, and I said, or any other relief to which the board.
I understand, I'm just saying, I, I'm just asking, sort of procedurally, was a new or an updated application submitted?
It was not, relying upon that language, I thought I was okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, we're, track in the paper.
Sure.
Okay, we're good. Doesn't, doesn't fit out of this, but I understand your request.
It was in the publication.
Right.
Yeah.
Some. And, yep, and or any other relief to the board of appeals may grant to allow the, to last.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, folks, you guys got anything more on this?
No, I think that other Leo, the first one. It makes sense just to keep that one driveway.
I mean, again, if there's, if they need to move it, that's.
And the intent right now is to keep the three, those three existing.
Yeah, the, nothing's going to be altered, that's going, there's actually four, there's a garage there too, but.
I was going to say it's missing some.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's there, that garage will service the two condominiums, but, um, the house is a significant structure that's on lot two.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, so obviously it makes sense to sell that separately. If we were doing the whole thing condo, we wouldn't need anything here at all.
Well, that's right, you, you're putting it in the right spots and keeping it. You're putting in the right spots and you can kind of edit it and then. Right, if we mind different.
Right.
We want. Uh, public. Yes, sir, please.
Uh, correct with this nineteen to two trail. Um, I'm the uh, a bonding property owner and um, did meet with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Rurier, you know, um.
Yep.
An engineer on Monday along with several neighbors of Mr. Sullivan's residence, so. Make some time for us to answer some questions and certainly appreciate that. Um, following that discussion, um, had some conversations with my neighbors and and we continue to have um some concerns about the proposal. Um, at the outset, this property is right at the top of the hill, right adjacent to the neighborhood that I live in. And ever, most of the property slopes towards the stream that connects the two reservoirs, the green bush one and the one that's up. Bicep to back for the angle. We have a very high water table to begin with. We're in the watershed protection district that the property is. So everything that's done at that property, whether it's paving the driveway, which everybody's contemplated, to plant a vegetable garden, is going to impact what water does on that property and how waters is, how water flows to our neighborhood. We have a high water table. We have water and basic issues like some of the people in Situ two, but this impacts all of us in the past thirty properties, probably, um, or used to enjoy that property. So that's what this all stems from. We're not, I'm not here to just stand in the way of progress, stand in the way of the developer trying to buy this property and then use it in a way that's profitable, that's enough. That's why, not my objective at all. Um, that being said, some of the the plan here um does raise some concerns just because it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense from a development standpoint. Um, we have a a large structure that they're um planning to renovate. Um, it seems to be just in its infancy in terms of what's actually being done at the property. Um, I guess I think there's some interior uh gunning, essentially gunning work has been done, but there hasn't been any real develop uh renovation of property at this point, of the the main house that is. Um, and then the proposal is to sell it without a garage. This is presumably gonna be a multimillion dollar house. Um, once it's finished, fully renovated, it's on over an acre. Um, it's, the plan is to sell it without a garage. It seems. It seems illogical. Um, so our first concern is can there be a garage built on this new lot? Without getting, without getting uh special permit or or special authority to do so. Um, because that's something that would impact the amount of impermeable services on on that for that property. Um, another uh. Now, in, in, say, multimillion dollar house, it was already listed for sale last year for about one point four million dollars, and that was, you know, pre-subdivision and and pre-gravation, but smaller lot, but a developed house, you know, you know, it makes a lot of difference in this case. Another thing that's, you know, just doesn't really make a lot of sense about the proposal is that you're gonna have this big, you know, fully renovated new house, and then you're gonna have these two cottages that are are next door that are gonna be condos, which is fine. I mean, that's, you know, you can point them however you want to. Uh, but one of them's like eight hundred square feet, the other one is, I think, is less than fourteen hundred square feet. It just seems ancient Bruce that someone's gonna buy this this property and have these condos here. And what I'm getting at is that. Although the plan, as it's been presented uh to the neighbors and is being presented to the board, and maybe the current intent, and I don't need to cast any dispersion on Mr. Sullivan's representations and his understanding towards client intent to do at this point. But. It just doesn't seem like the best use of the, or the most profitable use of the property. So it would seem to me that there may not be anything stopping anyone from coming in, buying the two condos and saying, now I have a sort of, you know, this whole lot and that I can put a much larger house on. And Mr. Sullivan has said that the 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 value of the those those condos over there is the grandfather protection, but once this lot becomes subdivision, I don't see, I don't understand how the the grandfather protection has, presents any real value to it. Uh, the grandfather protection is actually sort of restricted in the sense that you can't do anything to improve, to expand the footprint of those buildings without getting special approval.
So. Um, sorry.
No, no, I, if you have a question, I have.
No, 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 I I I don't. I I think I I understand your concern. Your concern isn't, and and I don't mean to minimize this at all. But your concern is not actually about this. Your concern is about what comes next.
Right.
Right? And 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 you're, you know, just to to make it clear to everybody that if you're listening. You're. What what you're saying, you're seeing what you perceive to be. A disconnect in the logic, right, on where these things are going, and your concern is what's what's the next step going to be? I I I don't know the answer to that, and unfortunately, I don't think this board can rule on that if this is otherwise permissible.
Hmm.
Right? So so that's all I can, I can tell you. Um, I can tell you that, you know, any other types of construction, um, especially if you raise uh uh the buildings, et cetera, and and wanna create, for example, a much larger house, would have to buy by the zoning bylaws, right? So it it might look very different, right, assuming that whatever that construction uh is done, it's the bylaws. Bob, do you have any comments on kind of on what this gentleman had to say?
No, I mean, relative to the concern about water, which is a natural one, the one that we hear frequently, uh, for obvious reasons. Uh, there are very rigid restrictions on the amount of development that can occur in the storm on a bylaw before triggering a full engineering review and mitigation uh procedures to guarantee that no more water uh in volume or in intensity will leave the site the best subsequent. So uh, I believe the trigger point is an increase in twenty five percent of the existing impervious area. Which I certainly don't see in the in the case of what's been discussed here tonight so far. Uh, doesn't sound like there's any building outside of the existing footprint.
Hasn't right now. So to your point, paving a driveway, those things might impact.
Paving a driveway certainly would count toward that.
Right.
Whether or not it would be twenty five percent.
Exactly.
I sort of doubt it.
Right.
Uh, but that's, you know, that's the trigger, and those are the regulations that everyone has to abide by. So if anything happened on that property in the future that triggered that, the planning board administers that that bylaw would be it would be invoked and administered as it is for every other development.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Who started? May I say again, Michelle Lane? Uh, because it's in a water protection district, the impervious limitation is fifteen percent. Uh, subject to ZBA accommodating any special request.
And that's not, right? Right now, that's not for us.
Fifteen percent of the land or a fifteen percent increase?
Fifty percent of the land area.
Yeah, okay, I was speaking about.
Twenty five percent increase, yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that.
Yeah. Um, okay, um.
Yeah, I'm just, absolutely, I'll call a final uh, kind of one of those.
Yep.
Um. My apologies, I was trying to talk. Um. Uh, you know, again, um, we, we understand that the current proposal is probably our best case. Um, you know, we have the three lots and potential improvement, like this is, this, this is, this is not so bad in terms of being a neighbor, like we're not asking to to do any actual construction now other than renovation on current footprint.
Right.
Um, again, we are concerned about what might happen in the future. Um, I'm wondering, and I, and to that point, as Mr. Sullivan acknowledged, this is being a little bit out of order. Rather than going to the planning board first and then having sign off on zoning, which I think would be a simple procedure for for this. I'm raising these issues here so that maybe it may be possible for the zoning board uh to provide. I don't know, some type of guidance or um expression, you know, of of these issues to the planning board, so they may be considered upon review of the actual drawing of the lot.
I I, so I appreciate that. Um, I think, uh, much like a little earlier in the evening where you saw someone that actually probably needs some planning board approval at some point in time, come before us first to sort of divide this up. It's a very similar process and procedure. Uh, I encourage you to bring your concern and 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 I mean the facility to the planning board. Uh, as they draw these lot plans. Um, and again, uh, to your point, uh, certain things that might occur in the future arguably would have to come for this this body um, it uh for approval, right? And again, in that situation, we would encourage you to bring those concerns again to us so we can look at them in the context of what might be proposed at that point.
Is um something like a uh deed restriction or something like that, because they're gonna have to, once it's subdivided, I mean, there's gonna be done, uh, if Mr. Sullivan starts to ask for deed for the for the condominium property, for whatever the land is, I mean, is it possible to do some type of restriction, a limit to building to existing square footage or something like that?
You you can agree, you can have yes in certain situations, and you can have the owners agree to do that. Uh, that being said, um, obviously, if there's a common driveway, uh, that services both lots, there are deed restrictions and statements to that account. Um, so there there may be, um, and again, to the extent that certain types of development might occur, uh, we might be able to put restrictions on them. At this point in time, those are not in front of us. In perspective, so it's difficult for us to do that.
Yeah, so so there wouldn't be like a approval contingent upon rotation of that sort of.
I mean, at at this point, all all we're seeing is renovation of existing structures, right? Um, and a subdivision to take, you know, put one existing structure over here and these other existing structures over here. So.
And and actually to that point, when you're reviewing the uh the application that's in front of you, um, it's, yeah, I I believe it was addressed that there hasn't been a subsequent application by law other than the one that was submitted prior to December.
Yes, but the posting, that's correct. That's correct, but the posting did did post it as um under forty eight section six. Um, which is, would be the the new section. Uh, it would not be uh and and or any other relief granted, so this would fall under a six ten two B. Um, so it's it's basically a slight shift.
Sure.
In the request.
Yeah, I'm I'm not trying to raise like some type of, some type of uh seizure level like.
No, no, no. I I. No, no, I I appreciate that, and what all I was saying, I I was trying to do that to make sure we had what we had in front of us, you know, that's all I was trying to find.
Right, and so and so I actually had a question about the the application itself, um, and just so I understand what is actually being requested of the board to do.
Yep.
Um, because the application includes language like a finding, made a finding that the existing non-conformities were not, or not not exacerbated by.
Yeah.
And it's like, like exacerbate is not a word that's used in any of the statutes of zoning bylaws, and it's like, so what do you exactly, what exactly?
Yeah, so this one is different because this is not about non-conformities and and simplifying non-conformities um under six ten uh point two uh B. Uh, it's uh the creation of this fifty foot frontage lot uh situation, which is a subdivision provision. It's not about siding a house and uh moving it, if you will, uh, and having non-conforming uses. So it it, the old statement uh that you've heard in other places is is sort of less applicable here.
Right, you're right. I understand that there's a separate standard for um for.
Yeah, this will be.
Will, yeah, will not um.
The, the, yeah, this is not about the non-conformities. It's really about whether it falls under six ten uh point two.
Okay.
And.
And so, and that brings to a, that's a fifty foot standard instead of the the usual.
Right, what happens is.
Standard in our law.
That's correct. If you have double size of the lot required, you can do fifty foot frontage under six ten point two of the bylaws. I I'm oversimplifying, but just to give you context.
He actually has more than fifty feet, yeah.
He has more, he has like seventy something feet.
Yeah, ninety.
From ninety eight there and then, yeah.
I mean, fifty is the shortest.
It's the shortest.
Yeah, the shortest.
Correct. So, yeah.
Kind of conservative, like if I had.
It's how, it's front.
Line through the path that goes.
Yeah, there's a width, there's a width issue and a frontage issue here. It's, he's creating a uh, what would otherwise be but for the frontage uh of of a conforming uh lot, and he can't do that under six ten point two.
Okay. And again, as far as uh construction of the, I see Mr. Sullivan putting seven in sand. I didn't know.
No, no, it's all right.
I I'm in this position in Florida. It's not even that late. I was expecting the nine in the morning.
It's supposed to go.
Say that.
Yeah.
Pretty much so.
Like it doesn't.
I don't think it, don't take it.
I didn't.
Yeah, it's not fucking me.
I'm, I'm, I'm just like loving you from Huskies playing right now, like.
Look, I, look, it's not reakin' the pen today. I don't care, right?
You're good.
Um.
Um, but.
I. Anything else?
Yeah, well, my question's gonna be, so in terms of building a garage for the the main house, I mean, that's gonna have to go through a separate permitting.
I. That will, your will need all its own permitting, and if it meets the zoning requirements, we love, may not see it, but if something changes, planning will see it. The building department will see it. There are plenty protections built in. So the budding neighborhood, if there's gonna be a change here, there's plenty protections built into the system where you're not gonna have major issues. We can't, we can't rule against something that may or may not happen in the future.
Right. Awesome. I think I'll sit down. Look, all good questions, and we do encourage the public, especially when they're, you know. And well spoken, and are really concerned to to uh to say their piece and to really discuss the issue. All right. Are we ready? What is that?
I don't. It's substantial improvement.
I think it's substantial improvement.
That's thank you.
So uh, on uh, so I move that with respect to the sixth application requesting special permit. Uh, by uh, it's until Kumar, so Steve, three twenty two C J C Realty Trust, uh, for special permit finding uh in accordance with NGL forty eight, section six, specifically section six ten point two. Um, uh, uh, to allow the applicant to have two lots in the driveway with its non-conforming structures uh at three twenty two Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Uh, that that uh will be uh, should be granted um, subject to, yes, as shown, as shown, I'm sorry.
I just read the right one.
That request, as shown on the plans.
February.
February third, twenty twenty two. Right, and specifically those plans. Uh, that request is granted, um, and uh, all necessary, any other necessary approvals, including in our common driveway approvals, if necessary, um, uh, and that these are probably to register these and it controls all these new applicable provisions. Uh, of the situated uh zoning bylaws to the extent new dwellings uh or or anything else is changing, uh, any wetlands bylaws or health regulations, of course. Um. Uh, so we move, we find that that should be allowed. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Walter, are you gonna drop this up first?
I will get it here by uh middle of next week.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Um. On that.
In connection with um couple of the other applications, particularly one and two.
Yes.
Oh, great, those.
Well, I was, I was gonna close out the meeting and then we're gonna say that, but.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Um, do we have a meeting minutes that we need to approve?
Uh, February.
Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the very meeting minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
And I thank you.
And with that, again. We will adjourn the meeting.
We will.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.